Okay. Welcome, everyone, to Monday, October 2, 2023 Board of Trustees Meeting for the Village of Lansing. My first order of business is to call the meeting to order, which I've just done, but I've also got to do a rule call. Wolfgang Boomer?
Present.
Susan Ainsley?
Present.
Drew Riedel?
Present.
Carolyn Greenwald?
Here.
And Ronnie Hardaway is here, so we're all here. We have a quorum. The next item on our agenda tonight is public comment period. This is a period of time where anyone who would like to discuss a topic that is not on our current agenda can speak. So is there anyone in the room who would like to speak? Seeing no one, hearing no one? Is there anyone online who would like to speak?
Just Mike Baker here for the planning board.
Thanks, Mike. Hearing and seeing no one else, I will move that we close the public comment period. Need a second?
Second.
Wolfgang, seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that's done. The next order of business is to approve our draft minutes that Jody has sent us from our September 14 meeting, 2023. I will move that we accept the draft minutes, so we have a... Or I'll move that they be discussed with someone's second.
Second.
Susan Ainsley, seconds. I'm making notes here for...
Jody.
Two. Okay, any discussion about the minutes? Have a chance to read?
I did have two comments. I sent... I think the minutes came on Friday, late afternoon. I didn't read this this morning.
Right.
I sent a couple of comments to Jody, so I'd like to kind of get... I don't think she had a chance... I assume she didn't have a chance to change.
No, she probably didn't.
But I'd kind of like to approve them after those changes were put in. They were kind of minor.
Just hold this off for next meeting?
That's possible.
I don't have a problem with that. That would be... Is that okay with everyone else?
Absolutely.
Okay, we will...
Thank you.
...tell them that the approval of those minutes until next meeting? So the next... The next order of business is we want to get a report from Susan Ainsley and Drew Riedel on their attendance at the NICOM conference. So, Susan?
Mine are attached. Overall, this is an excellent conference. I was trying to condense and clearly state, you know, that it was more relaxed, but not in a necessarily negative sense.
Right.
It's... I just sensed that the presenters, everybody was tired. Well, and it... Well, with the... Maybe the altitude. Too much before and after.
Lunch, I don't know.
I don't know. You know, just different than Saratoga.
Interesting.
And maybe because it...
Where'd you guys go? Where was it?
It was in Lake Placid.
Lake Placid, yeah.
Okay. Weather was nice, except for drizzle, you know, like Tuesday, which I spent most... I spent the whole afternoon watering sewer. Lead... Lead and copper pipe updates, which is really... It was interesting. You know, all that technical that John goes through with the connectors and where's this, where's that? And how... Which developer developed it, which date, and the concerns around it, and the costs, and... So that was probably the best session.
It was double sessions, right? It was two.
Yeah, I watered and sewered.
Yeah, it's a lot of stuff, yeah.
Then I missed, you know, my favorites. Like Barbara Vanets. Rebecca was... She said hello.
Oh, I love her. She's great.
As she sort of pointed this in a direction and waved. So pro-housing communities, clean energy pathways and products, which was interesting. Drew had lots of good questions for the presenter, and he was an independent contractor. And I don't recall that in Saratoga Springs, there had been an independent contractor or a vendor presenting. Ask the auditors. That was always wonderful, because you realize that we're in very good shape. And some communities don't have any board members that show up, you know? And who's... Who's the chief financial officer? And how important it is that we give Jody and the rest of the staff credit for all they do. And then the... Just the opening updates and the volume of... Bills that our legislators are trying to get past is sort of mind-boggling.
Yeah, and the impacts are mind-boggling, too.
Yes, so I learned about... A lot about mandates and...
Like what? Like what's coming down the pipe?
In terms of budgeting, mandates and what were mandated to fund. Actually, where's my orange copy?
There you go. It's a summary that's like 20 pages long.
Yeah, you know, Medicare, anything that state mandates in terms of budgeting affects us at the local level. And then it affects us here, you know? Is it a 2% increase? Is it a 3%? You know, how do we cover that process?
Was there anything non-budgetary in terms of changes to... Changes to state law?
I don't... Stuff I don't remember, but there's a list of...
Yeah, there's...
Sustainable buildings, I think, was something that came up.
Yes. Things that we don't deal with so much. Employee discipline, you know, all of that, because we don't have unions, we don't have a fire department, we don't have a police department, we don't have union to deal with.
Yeah.
So, yeah. So if anybody wants to look at this, they have it.
And I heard that, I think Barbara Epps is leaving after this year, is what I understood.
I thought she... I thought she just got appointed.
Oh, okay. Appointed to...
But she's... Isn't she the...
Because I only heard her mention that... I forgot the guy's name, is taking over to do the teaching now. Is she moving on to a different role? I'm not... That's... My understanding is she's not doing the teaching after.
Maybe not.
Yeah, so I don't know. That's what...
Well, that may have been what you heard.
Yeah.
That I didn't hear, because you were someplace...
It might have been one of the financial meetings that... I think it was Property Tax Potpourri or something.
Oh, yeah. Natalie, did you hear about this one? Would permit families of wrongful death victims to recover compensation for emotional loss when a tort费er is found liable for causing death?
No, I had not heard about that.
That's interesting.
Just scan that around.
If you could send that around, would be great.
Yeah, I'll get that for the document.
Ronnie, you have one more guest?
Yes. So Jerry Shang. Jerry Shang is... Our next topic, I'll try to introduce himself.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Let me... I'll just run through the... I just had like a David Letterman top 10. I won't go through all of it. You know, I think as some of the people that I've recently networked with, which makes it nice, in addition to the people who present, it was Ruby Pulian, I think, Pulian? Who's the Commissioner of Human Resources for Tompkins County, which...
Oh, okay. I know her by her first name.
Yeah, yeah. I haven't tried to pronounce it aloud, but she's very nice. She handles the HR for the Village of Lansing, essentially. And other things that kind of came up are some various things here between four and 10, but I thought it was interesting. The fund balance policy was something that was discussed a lot in terms of how big it should be, when we should spend it, so you don't collect... You don't want to collect too much in taxes.
Yes.
If it gets too big, it's an indication that you are... That the town prepared two budgets to make... You know, I want to make sure that... They mentioned that some towns don't really tax-differentially between the village and the other residents, and that... Yeah, so that's important.
Interesting.
Keep a mind... Keep an eye on. And then also in the civil service session, talking about organizational resiliency plan. How many layers... Like, if there's unexpected turnover, how do you manage that succession, as well as kind of want to make sure there's checks and balances? It sounds like some villages have a layer of clerks, deputy clerks, treasurer, like three or four.
Right, and being a small village, we do have concerns about that. So let's talk about that a lot in some of our meetings in the future.
So that's... That's just something there. Beyond that, the other two things I sent the slides upon... Well, first, the PC Master, the Clean Energy Pathways, who works for NYPD. He's Ithaca-based, and he works on advising municipalities on the pathways to clean energy, efficient pathway, resource-efficient. So he works for the state of New York, essentially through the NYPD, which is not a... It's not... It's not a for... It's not for-profit, just to be clear. He... Since he kind of had this presentation and he was talking through some of these issues, I know we have that asserted grant with a kind of a few free months. I thought it'd be helpful if he... If he's Ithaca-based, if you help him to come and just discuss potential options for that money.
We've got him scheduled tentatively for our October 12 meeting, right?
Noon, and that's correct, so...
That'll be great.
Yeah, and then the other thing was just that came up. This is somewhat of a new thing. You know, the state government had the man... Or I guess Governor Hochul was kind of thinking about kind of going forward with a housing mandate, building out homes. So that wasn't... That didn't sell as well, so we're taking more of a care approach, which is financial incentives to municipalities.
Right.
To grow. So they're offering a pro-housing certification after the CS Climate Smart Communities certification.
Okay.
And it would... It sounds like there's a strong chance that we already might qualify for some of these things. And if we require some paperwork and, you know, getting on the permits in past last... I think it's the last three years, something like that in terms of metrics. But it would essentially allow us to get preference for grants, so allow us to get some of the money that, you know, we've... That we all pay in taxes to help, you know, develop a future... Increase housing for... We talked about workforce housing, other things like that.
Where would it go? Would it go to the village or would it go to developers?
It would go... From what I understand, it would go to the village. Or... Yeah, because that's interesting, because it would build out the infrastructure. There she said there's a website going out or going...
Okay.
That will have more information on that. But that's a great question, because it is... It's interesting that the village would apply if it goes to developers.
Right.
So that'd be something to look at. And I... We need to... I guess the steps there, as the website goes up, we're looking at more would be a letter of intent and to assign an applicant coordinator to do.
They're looking around maybe the first of the year or something to...
Yeah, if you send the next few months, I'll keep an eye... We'll keep an eye out for it.
Yeah, if you hear of that, let's pass it along to us.
Yeah.
Something.
Yeah. I thought it was interesting, yeah, because, you know, she mentioned that it's good for economic growth, obviously for employers to come into the area and to expand if there's adequate housing in the area. So I thought that was an interesting thing to kind of keep on our radar. There's a... In the slide presentation, there's like a slide with, I think, 12 to 15 different grants on there, or like different agencies that you could get grants. So, you know, this is not something I kind of do on a regular basis, whereas like we're dealing with the Housing and Community Renewal Division of New York State. But I think it'd be good to kind of keep on top, especially if there's money that can come to help fund some smart growth in our community.
Yeah.
And I think that's probably... Oh, that's probably it for the highlights, I would say.
Okay. Susan, I saw in yours that apps that this year were handouts for all sessions? So most of the sessions didn't have handouts?
Right.
They just pointed you to an online...
Yeah, you were supposed to. Take a screenshot of the... The URL from far away over people's heads while you're juggling, because I always sit in the back. Because I have long... Well, just because I sit in the back. And so it made it a little difficult.
I did sit in the back.
I liked to write, write down, or then I can go back and refer to, unless it was continuing education credit. So anything attorneys, the clerks.
Right.
Right, right, right.
So do you know if they've released all the slides?
I haven't... I... The last time I looked, I forgot to look today.
Okay. So it would be on the NICOM side, so you wouldn't...
Yeah.
We could just go and scroll through the topics. So they usually offer that, but it's not always a meeting.
Yeah, I keep... I mean, I have my login and I keep looking.
Did the Google Drive work for you guys to... Or not?
Did the what?
I think... I think it does, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
Basically worked for me.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
No.
So...
So thank you for sending...
Yeah.
Sending us...
Oh, well, no, I can't recommend it enough. I haven't...
And Drew and I really did make a conscious effort to cover everything.
It's hard. It is hard.
Or something.
Yeah, sometime... There are certain times or slots that there's nothing there, and then one or there are three or four, and one... Another time slot, and it's very hard, but you just do the best you can. That's why it's sometimes helpful to go more than once, because you can... Hopefully, they'll repeat a topic you couldn't see.
Right.
So I know that Carolyn probably experienced the same...
Well, yeah, they were already talking about community. Yeah, still talking about community choice aggregation.
Oh, great, yeah. But I didn't get this... I didn't stick around for the Family Feud...
Oh, you didn't?
Quiz. No, I had to get back home.
That's funny.
Thank you both for attending and giving us an update. Obviously, if through NICOM you receive notifications of updates, of material, or anything, you should pass those along to us so we can... That would be great. Both for going. Okay. The next topic for tonight is to review the National Resources... National... Natural Resources, not national... National... Natural Resources Inventory Document. And we have with us tonight, online, Jerry Shang. Jerry is our Cooperative Extension Staffperson, who has been helping us with this latest iteration of the document, helping us get out. So Jerry, why don't you introduce yourself just for a moment?
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having me tonight. My name is Jerry Shang. I'm the Climate Smart Communities Coordinator for Tompkins and Toward County. So I've been with them since May and also I've been working for a few months. And I graduated from Binghamton with a degree in sustainable community, so I know a little bit of the work we're doing today. And I'm really happy to see that the village like Lansing is doing so much work, even though you guys are on a smaller scale compared to other municipalities.
Right. Thank you, Jerry. So I sent this to you Friday. I know it was kind of a last-minute thing. We just weren't sure if we would have it ready. We had our last Climate Smart Communities and Clean Energy Communities Task Force meeting Thursday evening. And we were hoping it would be a final review. This was the first time we reviewed it with all of the pieces in place and pretty much vetted. And then I wanted to get it to you. There's... We don't necessarily have to vote to approve this tonight. We can discuss it for another meeting or two. There's no hurry on that, from that respect. The... This particular document is a major artifact within the Climate Smart Communities Program for points awarded to municipalities to bring them up to... Ours would be... We're already a member of the Climate Smart Communities, but we would, at some point, they would rate all of our artifacts and say that we have reached a bronze level. And there's a silver level and a gold level, a gold level. So this is one of the main documents. The best way to describe it is it is a baseline of what our natural resources are now. And we had discussion at our last meeting, where you brought up the comprehensive plan, time to update. This would become not necessarily part of it, but would help direct any changes in within the comprehensive plan related to protecting natural resources and climate impacts to the village. How our comprehensive plan could use the information from here to get ready for the future. And pretty much all of that is explained within the document. It's very detailed. It's got baseline... I should... Boilerplate information, sort of from the Tompkins County perspective. And then we take that and we improve it, make it a little more focused on what the village's resources are. So we're not just worried primarily about the village, but we're also worried about the county, natural resources, obviously, state, nation, globe. But our little piece in it, this is what... This is what this document tries to do. It discusses climate change, addressing climate change, et cetera. Do you all have a chance to look at it?
Yes.
Do you have any questions about it?
Ronnie, what's the impact of the different levels? So bronze, silver, whatever?
It can make us more competitive for grants down the road. Jerry, if I'm speaking out of line, or you know a little more, you're welcome to jump in on this. But it basically shows that we're sincere about going forward with protecting, from the Climate Smart Community standpoint, protecting our village... Our village's assets related to our campus and the things that the village owns itself, but also protecting residents and businesses, roadways, public safety, et cetera, going forward. So as you go through the higher levels, you are... You become more competitive for federal state incentives.
Okay.
Merely state, but there can be some federal money involved, too. We don't normally use a lot of grants, but if we ever need one, it would be nice to have this information and those levels achieved, because it would help us... Help sell our grant proposal or grant request to whatever agency. Besides, we're doing... I think we're doing the work to protect our village. It gives us step-by-step guidelines on the things that we really should be doing. Some are applicable, but at the village level, a lot of the steps are not... They're not really valuable to us. We don't have control over certain aspects of Climate Smart Community program action items. They're just too high-level. But for us, we... There is a lot that we can do as a village, and...
I think so.
What we did... You're fairly new, and Drew also, is that when we first started this, the task force went through all of the pledge elements, which are a high-level topic, and there were action items underneath each element. We went through there and determined which elements we would probably try for and which elements we would not at this time. There were some that we probably would never undertake. But you don't have to do everything. You just have to do enough to gather the points to move up to bronze. So it's possible we won't achieve the very highest level, but we will have done the right things for the right reason on the way.
Okay.
So that's the way we've been treating it. And but this one is... An inventory from... Speaking from a process person, you have to know where you are before you know where you want to be. I mean, where are you now? What do you have before you start planning for the future? And this is an important document for our village related to the climate, related to our greenways, related to residents, businesses, infrastructure, and village government. So that was the reason this document is important to us. Any other questions?
For purposes of the Climate Smart Community action item, I think this is perfectly fine. I have some questions about a little... Little more specific to what we're actually seeing in the village in terms of maybe gallons of water that are running off and what historically has run off and has run off now? And then more clearly historically what the temperature is and what it is now, just kind of to see it laid out. I mean, maybe we don't need to do it for the Climate Smart, but that's actually what I'm curious about. Like, I don't understand what... What was this? The average minimum temperature dipping to 15? I don't... I don't understand what that means. What does an average minimum temperature dipping to 15 mean?
Which page are you talking about?
On page four.
Four.
I'm just curious about what are... What historically were the temperatures and what are they? What are we seeing in the patterns? And then what historically, more importantly, actually, is the water? And what are we seeing now in terms of gallons of runoff?
Some of that information is embedded in here, not specifically, but as close as it can be from the village's standpoint.
We don't know anything else.
We know... We can probably get that information, but from a high-level natural resources standpoint, to meet the intent and the requirement for the document, we didn't have to drill down that far.
So I'm happy for the document. I'm just... That's what I'm curious about, but I'm for the document, I'm totally happy.
We can... We can do that information. That can be... That question is why this document's here, so if questions come out that need more detail, we can find those details, make it part of another document or report to ourselves and Board of Trustees or for our...
Jerry, is that some information that you can find out for us? Like, what historically has been the amount of runoff that we've had and what... How that's been increasing?
Yeah, so I'm actually going to answer your question. So my predecessor, Rachel Zabell, was the one that wrote this document. I'm only the one that looked over it. That being said, we did have a question about the average minimum temperature as well. And so what the... I think what Rachel was trying to say was that... So average minimum, as in if you account up all the days in a season and you average up all the minimum temperatures of each of those days, that's the average minimum temperature? Whether or not it's relevant per se, as of now, I don't... I don't really know if we mentioned or not how it transformed over time, but over time, that minimum temperature has definitely gotten higher. So that's just based on trends that I know of. And in terms of like gallons...
15 seems really low. That's cold.
Jerry?
Sorry?
Over how many years do you average the temperatures, the minimum temperatures?
So that's... That's the days of the month. That's based on...
That can be... Sorry. I'm a ski instructor. I'm out there all the time, and it's the minus 15. Sorry. I'm out there at probably minus 20 one or two days during a ski...
That's actually probably incorrect.
And then you have... You have minimum temperatures in March of, let's say, 42 or something like that. So the question is, over how many years do you actually average the minimum temperature over all the seasons or in winter, actually? For me, that's a peak low over 10 years or something like that. I have no idea. But it's definitely not over a season, the average minimum temperature. Otherwise, I would look a little different. Sorry.
No, that's fine. I'm happy to relook at the data as well. That's what I found off of the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Association.
For Ithaca, for the village?
For Lansing as a whole.
You said it was 15 or minus 15?
Minus 15.
But that's not our average.
15 doesn't sound that...
It's still way too...
I mean, Jerry... Jerry, I think the bigger thing... When we were talking about this last time, we had the one with the page with the two graphs for precipitation and temperature. And it was only kind of essentially just one season snapshot. And I think, you know, the average, what it was, is not going to be the average, but it's going to be. So I think in some ways, if we can have kind of a moving... A picture of kind of what these things look like over a few years, maybe. And I don't... I don't know if we need to have more pictures or maybe just a few data points on that or just a line. I think that would kind of give a sense of where things are going in precipitation and temperatures. I think just that the graphic is good, but it's just one season. Because one of those... Yeah, so maybe something like that would kind of help to clear the... Give some context, I think, a little bit more.
Yeah, and I do want to point out that this is a foundational document, so a lot of the things you're mentioning right now is... Comes up as actions later in the CSC. So right now, for example, I'm working with the Town of Dryden and Newfield. We're working on something called the Resiliency and Adaptation Plan. So that's when we look at the exact amounts of, you know, like precipitation and such, and what kind of flood mitigation practices or adaptation strategies you can use to kind of limit the damage that a natural disaster has caused.
Yeah, so let's... Let's pass this or do whatever we need for this for the purposes of Climate Smart, and then let's collect the more data as we continue on the process for the purposes of our planning and our next comprehensive plan.
So you'll see that in some of the graphics for us, I'm looking at Figure 1, there's a little piece of text between the two graphics. Climate normals based on 1991 to 2020 data. Rankings based on 1895 to 2021. Climate normals based on 1991 to 2020 data, rankings based on 1895 to 2021. So the graphics are based upon a longer scale of information and compared with potentially an even longer timeline. The thing that I'm seeing about the winter high temperatures have been between 31 and 36 degrees, with average minimum temperatures dipping to 15 degrees. That doesn't mean that you're not going to have cold days, obviously. But I suspect that if you go back 25, 30, 40 years, that minimum temperature might have been minus five. But with global warming, you only have temperatures minimum of 15 degrees.
Dipping implies going down.
That's exactly the case, you know? If you look at climate, you look at long-term trends, the rest is weather. So four years ago, we had a week where we were out there at, yeah, minus five, minus eight, whatever, and that was for a full week and things like that, you know? Then you have winters where you even don't reach 10.
Right.
So, but the question is, what's the long-term trend?
Right.
And what is the weather doing? Because the weather is obviously depending on some other things. So it's just the question of, if you throw average numbers around and things like that, you have to know what is the base for your average, you know? It's as simple as that.
Right. The-- Yeah. They, I think what they're trying to do with the graphics is to show that information visually rather than numerically. The figure two is showing the amount of changes. So it's possible that we can put in some more information about long-term, what that trend would be. So Jerry, why don't we try to put something together and see if we can fit it into the document?
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay. And then if we get it and we think that this is probably the right place for it, make a recommendation where we can, within the CSE action items, where we could use that information and document it and use it in the future. In other words, if this information is too much detail for this level of a document, where else could we use it and make it part of our artifacts for other action items, if possible?
Yeah, I can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, Jerry, I think the, I guess, keeping things going, I think what we were talking about, it sounds like yours, that would come in the resiliency, adaptability plan.
Right.
And I think, from what I understand, the bigger impacts for this area will be the amounts of rain, large amounts of rain at various points. And so stormwater and things like that will be important. So I think kind of the trends on that, that Carolyn was talking about, if that goes in the next document, I think we can, this is, as you said, kind of what we need, and then we can kind of keep it moving instead of circling back.
That's, you know, that's possible, but if, like I said, we don't necessarily approve it today. If we can make this document better that uses this new data, then it won't be a major problem to insert it. But we'll just, we'll get the information, take a look at it, and then see about adding it. Any other questions? So we will do that. Now, the thing that I noticed, we've taken care of all of my concerns as late. The thing you'll need to realize is that the paper document is obviously not electronic. So what we've done with Jerry's help is all of the resources and references at the end that you see on paper, our electronic version of the document, all of those links will be live, so a person can come into the document, click on that link, and go directly to the source of the information. So that took a lot of work on Jerry's part, too. But, you know, this document has been evolving over the last two years. The pandemic played havoc, and there were some staffing changes through. Rachel had to leave, and then Jerry was running, so it delayed this a little bit. But the thing to remember is that this is our first version, when we release its version one. So if we find more information as we go along, as things change with the climate, et cetera, we can always come back and update this document. But this is where we are, we think, right now. So do we want to wait until we get this new information, take a look at it before we discuss it?
I don't. I think it's fine.
You think it's okay?
I think it's okay.
All right. Okay. So I will move that we accept the Village of Lansing Natural Resources inventory for 2023.
Excellent.
Thank you, Wolfgang. Any other discussion?
And just to be clear, when we get other information on the other report, we can always insert that in here in a future date, just to--
Yeah, we can come back and make changes at any time we want.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah, this is a chiseled-in-stone document. None of the doc, all of our documents that we create in the village are living, just like the comprehensive plans. We're going to look at that again, so we can go through this the same way. I suspect in five years, a lot of this information will need to be--
Go back to regular--
Yeah.
Okay.
Anyway. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of accepting the document, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay if you want to.
Yep, and if anyone ever has any criticism or, like, you would like to know certain information, let me know. I'm happy to do my own research on that, and then hopefully maybe reach out to other people who might have that information.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks.
Thanks for all your help. Okay, the next topic, we had talked a couple of meetings ago, might have been last month, at our meeting, about our, we had recommended holding a recognition event at Nantucket Park, and we had never set up a date, and it was going to be problematic with Jody being gone. So we need to talk about that tonight. I would like to try and do it within this month. If we go into November, the weather's going to be questionable. So probably a Saturday or Sunday within this month? And I would give us, not this next weekend, but at least a couple of weekends for us to kind of put them all together and get invitations out. So does anyone have any recommendations?
Recommend we do it ASAP. It's going to be cold and soon as we blink.
I agree.
The 21st is better than 28th for that reason.
Second.
Okay.
Looks okay.
I got, let's see, Sunday, the 22nd. The Saturday, the 21st, I'm not available for that one, unfortunately. Maybe the Sunday, the 22nd?
Okay.
Does that sound good?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Right.
That's the recognition?
This is--
Volunteers?
The--
Recognition what?
Recognition of people who have helped the village with greenways, parks, flower planting. Village staff will be invited, so anyone, we're collecting a list of people, we have been for about a month now, of people to invite to this. It's by invitation only. What we're hoping to do is make this an annual event to try to attract more volunteers to help with our parks and so forth. And every year, we will hold a recognition event like this, so.
I have a question. Are we inviting people--
Families?
No, people who are part of the, well, that's it, but people who are part of the Village Observer Program?
That's a very good question. I think we should.
I think they're a very important part of our village community.
I agree. The, I think that I included Larry Biery, who's the coordinator for that, but he's also served on the Greenway Committee.
Yeah.
We could ask Larry to--
Invite his--
Send names to Jody so that we can invite. No, I agree that the Observer Program is very--
And did you say you wanted families or did not want families?
How can you invite one person out of the family?
Okay, families it is.
Quite frankly.
I was going to say, it depends on the family.
At what time do we want to have a party?
That's another question. We usually try to hold something like that. Noonish, noon to 1:00. We could say, starting at noon and going till about 2:30 or 3:00 at Nantucket Park.
Village party.
That's the 22nd, yeah?
October 22nd.
Hopefully, there's not a football game. I mean, there will be a football game. Hopefully, there's not a Patriots game.
Is it a family of the Board of Trustees event as well?
Yes.
The game won't start at noon, so get there early if you're worried about--
What time is it going to be?
That's true. If you get there at noon, you can leave by 1:00.
That's true.
If you have a football game to watch.
No, if you, you don't have to stay for three hours. Come, grab your food, say hi, and go.
Excellent.
Okay. Thanks. I'll pass that along to Jody also. So that's good. And I think that next year, we will kind of have this process down, we'll know what to expect, and we'll try to do it a little later in summer and not in the fall. But for this year, this is the first time, we're kind of behind the ball on this one. Okay, next topic, mayor comments. I really don't have any comments that are major. Deborah and I did visit with the Menlo Micro people, and I know, Wolfgang, you were interested in the tour. They're not quite ready yet. They're just basically kind of putting the facilities together. They're assessing what equipment was there from Kionics that they can keep, what equipment has to be moved out, and then they've got to look at moving in new equipment and where to put it. They're playing with what types of offices to set up. It's going to be a staged development there. They'll probably start out with 40 to 50 people, and then they will gradually increase that up to about 100, 120 people down the road. What they will do is that they, at the same time, they've got a countdown clock in their office that they, there's a date, they're going to hold a public event, and every day they walk in and see this clock counting down, tenths of a second, second, minute, blah, blah, blah. So they will hold a public event and invite people for a tour, so that's probably when the trustees should go, because they'll be all ready and they can explain things, and they'll have a lot more ready. They just weren't quite ready. My concern when I first contacted them was that they had not considered how much water they would need and the sewer units, but they've already taken care of that. There was a concern from Bolton Point that a similar facility in California used a special laser to build similar products, and it was using like a million gallons of water a day to keep the laser cool. Their process does not do that. So they won't be using any more water than Kionics did. So that's good. So I just wanted to let you know that they are very excited about having people come, especially from the village government, but they would rather be more prepared, because right now, it's just chaotic.
Of course.
So--
When is their intended start of production?
I would say next year. They've got, they already are producing, they already are producing this overseas. They're trying to move all of the production units, all the production facility here, and they'll be phasing out overseas and in here, but they've got to get all of the equipment in, get it calibrated, get the staff trained and in place. And then I think sometime next year, they will be starting to develop manufactured products here, and then it will go forward from there. But it will be phased in manufacturing, too. It won't start at 100%. It'll gradually phase in here, phase out from overseas.
I'm up.
Yeah.
As you describe it, I would assume at least a year, at least.
Sorry? A year?
As you describe it, I would assume at least a year.
Yeah, it just depends on how fast they can get the equipment that they need installed.
Need to run at rate and things like that.
Yeah. It won't be spring of next year.
Definitely not.
So they apologize that they didn't have more details.
That's okay.
And this is the reason, by the time we hold our grand opening, we'll have a lot more information. They'll have a better idea of when all this is going to kick off, so that's a better time. Next topic is general discussion. Wolfgang, do you have anything for us?
Well, first of all, I'm now on the agenda for the youth commission, so finally I got invitations for their meetings, so that's done.
Thank you.
Two more questions. Are we familiar with the plans of TransAct? How do they phase out to the end of the year?
I don't have any idea.
And Bogmore, what they are doing?
Nope. Don't have any idea either.
Because that would be a pretty big impact to us.
It can be, yes. It will be impacting both the village and the town.
Yes, matter of fact.
Exactly.
Because it's split the tax base.
No, I don't have any idea.
Okay. And we know about the potential development on TransAct.
Yes.
So we've heard--
We know that they pull out by the end of the year.
Yeah, so probably by, yeah, exactly right. But as far as when exactly, no idea. It could be after the first of the year, but we do know it's going to be, it's potentially going to migrate to something else, so that's all I can say. Anything else? Susan?
No.
Drew?
I guess two things. One, the community choice aggregation update. The city of Ithaca approved their CCA plan on September 6th, so both the city and the town have approved it now.
Okay.
It was passed 10-0 by the city. They still need to finalize the approval of the CCA administrator.
Okay.
And recall, there were two parts to it. One was just kind of the basic community choice aggregation, where they, the administrator and municipality would essentially negotiate for electricity supply at a certain price for the people to participate.
Right.
Then there's the CCA Plus, which is kind of an additive layer, which, where the CCA administrator would help to coordinate with investors and lenders and customers on local projects, like a community microgrid. So the kind of a co-op ownership structure often, among other things. So on this, it was, I heard a little bit of their meeting from the 6th, and they mentioned that it's in, the CCA Plus, I'll call it, will be rolled out well after the CCA, kind of basic plan, so they'll have some time to work on the kinks in detail, the legal vehicles for the co-op, et cetera. So I think we have some time as far as how it affects the solar array law, which I don't know if it necessarily does, but because there might be different ownership structures, that's why we decided to bring up the question. And actually, dealing with Mike, or kind of helping to maybe coordinate a meeting with Mike, but also I sent this to Natalie--
Okay.
Mike Baker as well, just so I have some background on it. So that's, I think, where everything stands on that at the moment. And then, since I was covering, yeah, do you have any questions?
No.
And then, since I was covering the planned board meetings, and actually Susan was too this month.
Observer.
Susan's addicted to the plan.
Yeah. So I think, you know, just as a note, the beer properties, the resolve to pave that stub that would connect, eventually connect to Lansing Trails. On BOMAX, I think there were a couple of interesting issues that came out that were also, I think everyone got the email from the east shore resident as well, but some of these issues were touched down in the meeting. The sewer units with beer properties uptown BOMAX, you know, will we need more sewer units in aggregate? How many sewer units are left? The village has responsibility to ensure there are enough, were kind of the points that were brought up in the meeting. In terms of traffic safety, was another issue, should the developer fund a traffic study, specifically on the BOMAX Warren intersection? And there was concern about short cutting of traffic through Lansing Trails. So those are the things that brought from the BOMAX as far as the things that--
I know that in developments, if a traffic is required, it's always paid by the developer.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So that's our--
Yeah, so some of that we know and some we don't, but, yeah, good. Carolyn?
So the REACT partnership is having a little bit of issues. Maybe you've heard about this with its budget?
Yes.
So Tompkins County is the biggest contributor to their budget, and their proposed budget for the upcoming year involves the county contributing about $94,000, which is a 9% increase over last year's. And the county, what is it called, the administrator, who's the, is it called the administrator? The administrator recommended a 2% increase for all organizations, and so then that leaves them a shortfall of about $7,000. And it is possible for the legislators to then override the administrators--
And it is possible for the legislators to then override the administrator's recommendation of 2%, and that just is like an extra added step that now they're concerned about. So they're sort of petitioning and trying to talk themselves up to the legislators to see if they get their proposed budget approved, but right now, there is a shortfall. The way that they pay their bills and structure their budget is they do county money, county money, county money, all the other municipalities' contributions for the fourth quarter. I don't know why they do it like that, but that's how they do it, and I guess they'll have to be playing with some numbers and making some changes if they don't get their $7,000 that they're looking for.
I know that they did make their presentation at a recent expanded budget committee.
Yeah.
So no decisions are made yet, but the county legislators just received the information. It goes into a long list of all of the OTRs, and then they will start the discussions, I think, later this week about this, so yeah.
Oh, anyway.
Yeah, many departments are suffering.
Who else besides REC partnership was looking for more than 2% and then didn't?
I don't remember which ones were looking more at 2%. They're more, more of them were looking at the programs and personnel that they needed, equipment that they needed, and the director, county administrator, sorry, just, she couldn't do it. Because, I wish Deborah were here, because she could explain it much better than I can, but this is from what I understand, the state's unfunded mandates are increasing this year.
Okay.
Plus, we have, we were supposed to have, the county was supposed to have received a specific amount of money from the federal government as part of the pandemic funds that were distributed. For a while, the state was the pass-through. Now, the New York State is saying, not only are we not, we're not going to give you any more of that money, but we're going to retroactively claw back 100% of the money that we've already given you. I don't know who made that decision or why, but that's the way it is. So the county, not only not going to receive money that could have been used for projects, but, well, this is more money for Medicare. I'm sorry, this is for Medicare.
So this doesn't impact the village and our money that we got?
It's going to impact us if the county has to raise, has to exceed its tax cap and raise their taxes beyond.
Right, but we don't have, our budget is not going to be.
Our budget is not going to be impacted, as far as I know, but it's, you know, if any programs that we rely on, for instance, REC partnership, if we decide we want to give more money to help make up for deficiency, it will impact us somewhat, but not dramatically, that we can't handle, but.
Actually, not to interrupt, but Deborah has a nice newsletter.
I read that, yeah.
Which was helpful. It sort of linked what I had thought I heard in Placid, and the maintenance of effort.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's, the county is suffering, but we aren't alone. Almost every county in New York is going to suffer the same consequences, so anyway. Any other questions?
That's all I had.
Okay. So the last topic is adjournment. Someone want to move that we adjourn?
Aye, so move.
Susan moves, so we have a second?
I'll second.
Second? Okay, we are officially adjourned in the meeting after we vote aye. Aye at 8:24.
You didn't write anything. I have to go put my phone down.